You're right.
Okay, let's, we'll start with the caucus. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting. Before we begin the caucus, why don't we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God.
Hey, thank you. Beginning with the agenda, since there will be no hearings from citizens at this time, we will entertain the administrative tasks of the council, approval of the minutes and department reports. Those are administrative and we can move on to the communications from division and department heads. And that's item number two from the city controller. As it currently exists, our chief of police was paid eighty thousand eight hundred dollars a year. That is, has been determined to be substantially lower than what would be warranted for a community our size and the requirements of the position. To that end, when Chief Michael retired, we tried to adjust that on a fair basis. And also to that end, given the fact that we have a new police chief, there's a request to annual salary at ninety-five thousand. And to that end, we must transfer some funds in the amount of five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to accommodate that increase in the salary. And to my understanding, there is an account that does have accessible funds. It is the paid holidays account. And so that could be covered in that respect. Are there any issues or questions from the council?
Yeah, I got one, President. So we, we already approved that when, this pay raise, it's already been approved?
I don't believe the pay raise itself has been approved. I don't think the contract has been finalized with the interim police chief. But I understand that the target salary will be ninety-five thousand dollars. And that's been something that apparently has been discussed between the interim police chief and the mayor's office.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering why the city controller has it on here and not the mayor or the city attorney?
It's, the current budget is only budgeted for eighty thousand eight hundred.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the ninety-five thousand dollar annual salary won't be set until this coming budget.
If I could, Council President?
Yeah, go ahead, Rick. Thank you.
You know, as you know, Jim, Jim Michaels retired. We had given him some adjustments a couple meetings ago. And the mayor thought a fair salary, at least through the end of this budget year, would be ninety-five thousand. That amount is still substantially lower than what other similar teams are getting in other jurisdictions. There may be a request going into the new budget year. But for now, she's asking that you approve his appointment as acting police chief through the end of this budget year at the salary of ninety-five thousand dollars. Together with, we're also working on a benefit contract similar to what Mr. Michelle was getting when he was police chief, which included health insurance, sick time, vacation time, in amounts that were similar to either what he received under the police contract or his police chief.
So, Rick, I don't mean to interrupt you, but according to this communication, this isn't a request for an approval of the ninety-five thousand dollar salary, whatever that balance would be to the year end. It's, it's asking for the transfer to, to reach that amount.
Correct. Alright.
So I would think that that is, is an item to be further anticipated in the upcoming budget. I don't know if our city-
Probably be on the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm getting at. We gotta approve this, right? I know we can approve the, moving the money, but we all, we already have to, we have to approve the raise.
The hiring.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, both. Yeah.
Both.
Okay.
But at the time being, there's a request that we transfer the funds which are available. So whatever your consideration is when it comes up for a vote, we'll anticipate that at that time. Any other communication or discussion on that issue?
I know Councilman Sirdike could also question why it came from the city controller. Obviously because she's the one that, you know, controls the accounts and knows where the money's coming from. So she saw it fit to ask for this so that she could have the authority to transfer money to that budget line for, through the end of this year. Is that correct, Carolyn?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
But again, the point was made that that hasn't, that salary hasn't been okayed.
You're right.
That we'll have to, we'll have to pick that issue up again.
Correct.
Okay. Anything, any other discussion on, on that item number two? Moving on to item number three, a request from the city controller that, again, another transfer of funds be made in consideration of the settlement of a contract negotiation with CSEA, a union contract that includes raises for certain departments. And the monies that are available for those would come from the vacant position of the animal control officer to the extent of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. There's a breakdown in the agenda of what department will be getting what amount of money to reach that total. Any discussion on that issue?
Yeah, I got, I got a question, Council President.
Yeah, Councilman?
It sounds like this just happened, but I think it happened a long time ago, didn't it?
I'm not sure of the date. Carolyn?
I believe the contract, the final, the final contract was signed back in December.
Okay.
And we, what we did was, we had some money in reserve, so we were able to use that to pay the back pay and the pay up to the, that, a certain point. And then after that, we didn't have enough money, so we needed to make an adjustment from, I forgot the specific date, I think it was in March, maybe, and March forward. And with the whole COVID-19 virus going on and everything that happened, it just kind of got pushed off.
Uh, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure. It looks like we're giving people raises now and we're not. This happened before all this COVID-19 stuff and all that, right?
Well, it's-
Correct. This is just the final step to match the budget.
Okay. So do we, does the council have to approve this contract also?
It's gotta approve the transfer, right?
Just approved the transfer. The contract was approved by council back in-
November or December, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other discussion on that issue? Moving on to item number four from the city controller. Council was supplied with a, a copy of the City of Lackawanna's audited financial statements as prepared by an independent auditor's report ending, for year ending July 31st, 2019. That will be on record and, and available at the clerk's office once things open up and people are able to review that document if they're so interested. Each of the council members receive the copy. However, in having looked at that, I would suggest that on page fifty-eight, there is a statement by the auditors indicating, and I'm quoting, "The results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." So in my opinion, that is a favorable report. Any other comments from the council?
No, I read, I read it the day they gave, they put it in our box and it's, I'm very satisfied with it.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Carolyn for doing an excellent job. And I'm, normally has all the answers I asked. I know I'm up against a question. I appreciate her helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Enjoy your questions. They're all good. They're good questions, so keep them coming.
You're welcome.
And just so you know, Kevin, Carolyn is available almost every day at the controller's office in case you want to give thanks to her while she's working. All right, moving on to item number five. There was additional fire hydrant installed and that pursuant to specifications necessary at thirty-nine zero four South Park Avenue. There's a request from the city attorney that we authorize pursuant to the city's existing water authority contract, an amount of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars approximately and eight cents for an annual maintenance fee. Any comments?
Uh, Council President, if I could add something here?
Yes, Jeff.
Uh, on the agenda, I inadvertently omitted the actual resolution that's attached to this communication. But on the copy that I sent you today, the resolution is included. So just as you see the ordinance included with the attachments, this should have had a resolution. It is included when the actual meeting starts on the updated agenda.
Yes, I, I saw the updated agenda. Thank you, Jeff. Any, any, anyone else have any comments? All right, moving on to item number six, city attorney requests that council authorize a three-year contract within which we will be addressing the auditing needs and the management needs of our workman's compensation account for the public's purpose. The City of Lackawanna itself insured. And as a result, instead of having an insurance policy covering such items as workman's compensation, we cover it ourselves as a city. And to manage that account, we have in the past used companies to accomplish that. And the past company is no longer going to be with us. This will be a new company that will be online. It's a three-year contract. I believe it's approximately sixty-five thousand dollars a year for the base costs. There are other costs that would be involved for other services if needed. And of course, as indicated, this is to replace the company that already does this service for the city. Any comments from the council?
Nope. Yeah, I, I talked to our city attorney earlier today and I asked, and Rick, could you explain what happened a little bit so the public can-
Yeah, as, as Fred indicated, we're self-insured for workers' compensation purposes. We hire a third-party administrator that, that regulates and administers all our claims. And it's self-funded through us. We were paying them approximately the same amount, about sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Their, their parent company is United Healthcare. And United Healthcare decided to get out of the third-party workers' comp administration business. So they closed offices all over New York State and in the Northeast. They recommended that we go with another company and we had an offer to do a contract from them. But I shopped it around and was able to find a company here in Buffalo that is willing to step in for about the same amount. But a lot of the third, additional charges that were included in the prior contract are not included in this contract. So we hope to be able to save a few bucks anyway in the administration. But hopefully, there'll be no additional charges, no hidden charges that, that we kind of paid under the other contract and we're gonna be, we're gonna be paying with the company that they recommended that we go along with. So I guess it remains to be seen, but I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to hold costs down a little bit on workers' comp administration.
Uh, thank you, Rick. And that's a point I wanted to raise. You, you did have more than one bid, right?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's, that's awesome. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yep.
Anyone else? There was a request to waive the rules from the, I'm sorry, did I miss something? There was a request from the Commissioner to DPW to waive the rules and consider passing a request to purchase a vehicle to replace one that of our, in fact, it's a boom lift truck that is no longer in service and no longer serviceable to address the city's needs. It's a used vehicle for the amount of thirty thousand five hundred dollars. It's a boom truck that allows us to access overhead lighting and whatever other, other needs we might have. Without that vehicle, it's my understanding that we have to hire a subcontractor and pay separate funds. For instance, if a light bulb has to be changed in an intersection to the, to the tune of about four hundred dollars, a crack for that, whatever other duties that vehicle would see. And it's my understanding that since this is a 2006 vehicle, the purchase of it would be contingent on our people investigating or inspecting the vehicle to find out if it's satisfactory. And the authorization to purchase that vehicle would be, would be made contingent on that fact. And it's further my understanding that the vehicle we had that filled that role presently was approximately forty years old, which was a compliment to Tony DeSantis's workforce and himself to have kept that vehicle and serves for so long. So this being a fifteen-year-old vehicle or approximately thereabouts, I would assume that that would allow the city to have use of that vehicle for many years to come. Tony DeSantis, anything you want to add on that?
Well, you started off, like you said, it's not gonna be, until Chris Gussman goes down and looks at it Friday morning, you know, we'll see what he says on it and we'll go from there. But I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be ninety-nine percent sure that that vehicle's adequate. And it'll last us another fifteen years.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Tony.
The insert I gave all you guys, I don't know if everybody has it, shows all the inspection that these vehicles go through, certifications they have to pass in order for them to be operable. So it's a good truck we're getting for the price.
Yeah, we saw the, the back, backup information you submitted, Tony. Thank you for your reference. And it's my understanding that this vehicle was found where, in the state of Maryland or something?
Yes, by the fire chief, you know, he was scrolling through some fights, I guess, last week and I came across this. Brought to my attention. And yeah, I want to thank him for that, too.
Yeah, we all thank him for that. Now, this vehicle is about thirty thousand dollars. What would a new vehicle cost?
Oh, we got one quoted at one hundred and fifty-seven thousand for brand new.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to the council. Council, any questions on this issue?
No, fine.
No, I've read it all. I, I like it.
Okay. And there's an ordinance requested amending the budget. There's monies allow, available for this and the request would be the money to be transferred to allow this to happen. Again, the council, anything further on that?
No, sir.
All right. And we do have old business. And Rick, Judith, our city attorney will be requested later on, once the regular meeting is in session, to address that issue of old business. Unless there's anything further, what I'm gonna do is I am gonna ask that we commence our regular city council meeting at this time. City clerk, would you take the roll?
All right, just to remind everybody, this meeting is being recorded. Obviously, it's, it's, we're hoping to get it on Facebook Live. If not, it'll be delayed, but obviously being recorded. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Here.
Department heads law.
Here. Sorry, I was on mute.
Here.
Public works.
Here.
Public safety.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
As you know, hearings from citizens, we take via email to my email in, in the city. As of noon today, we had no emails from any residents with comments or questions. So we're going to pass the section for residents, hearings from citizens, and move right into the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty.
I move that the minutes be adopted as written.
Moretti.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Morano, second by Schultz, to adopt minutes as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Moro, uh, Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Departmental reports, number one, city controller.
I move to receive and file city controller's department report.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file city controller's departmental report. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Communications from division department heads, number two. City controller requests city council approve the attached budget ordinance increasing the salary of the police chief to ninety-five thousand dollars for the remaining portion of the year.
I move to receive and file the request and act on the ordinance.
Moretti, second.
And a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file, act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. The associated ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget ordinance adopted June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen by increasing the salary of the police chief to ninety-five thousand dollars for the account A thirty-one twenty-one-on-one personal services subsection, police chief, by adding five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the budget code for police department personal services and appropriating five thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the budget code for paid holidays.
I move to adopt the ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Number three. City controller requests city council approve the attached budget ordinance to transfer funds to cover the budget differences which resulted from the contract negotiations of the CSEA union contract. The funds are being transferred from the Control of Animals Personal Services account, which is not being utilized.
Move to receive and file, act on the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Schultz, receiving file, act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. The associated ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget ordinance adopted June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen by increasing appropriations for controller personal services, the treasurer personal services, law department personal services, personnel personal services, engineering personal services, the police department personal services and recreation personal services, and decreasing the appropriations for Control of Animals personal services.
Move to the, adopt the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Schultz, to adopt ordinance as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Number four. City controller submits the official copy of the City of Lackawanna's audited financial statements for city council review. A copy of the report entitled Financial Statements and Independent Auditor's Report for the year ended July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen has been filed in the city clerk's office where it is available as a public record for inspection by all interested persons. Pursuant to section thirty-five of general municipal law, the City, Lack, the Lackawanna City Council may, in their discretion, prepare a written response to this audit and file any such response in the city clerk's office as a public record for inspection by all interested persons.
Move to receive and file and join in Councilman Sirdike in congratulating Carolyn Nicometto for another fine job.
And a motion by Morano, second by Schultz, to receive and file the audit. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Number five. City attorney. There is an additional fire hydrant installed at thirty-nine oh four South Park Avenue. Request the city council please approve the attached resolution authorizing the yearly maintenance fee in accordance with the city's existing water authority contract, number WS eight dash zero one four. The cost is approximately two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents per year for the annual maintenance fee.
Move to receive and file and act on the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file. This will be a resolution, though. Act on resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. The associated resolution where as the city council authorizes the addition of the additional fire hydrant at thirty-nine zero four South Park Avenue to its existing water authority contract, WS eight dash zero one four, and agrees to pay the annual maintenance fee to the Gary County Water Authority in accordance with current contract, WS eight dash zero one four.
To adopt resolution as written.
Second, Moretti.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt resolution as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Number six. City attorney requests the city council authorize the mayor to enter into a three-year contract with the option of two one-year extensions with future comp for workers' compensation administration. And there's a complete copy of the agreement on file in my office.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Need a request to waive the rules.
I saw move.
Second.
Who's my second? Do you hear me, the second?
Yeah, to waive the rules, yeah.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to waive the rules. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Got a communication from the DPW Commissioner who requests the city council approve the purchase of a two thousand six GMC boom lift truck. The truck was found online and the purchase would be contingent upon a visual inspection on Friday by our mechanics. The price for this vehicle is thirty thousand five hundred dollars. All inspections and certifications are attached.
Move to approve request.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. And associated with that, the city controller requests the city council approve the attached ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of a signal maintenance vehicle, which is the same for the city garage. Funds will be transferred out of the snow removal account and the city garage gas account. Our current vehicle is in poor shape and will no longer pass inspection.
Move to receive and file and act on ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file, act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. The associated ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty budget ordinance adopted June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen by adding twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents for the budget code city garage equipment to include appropriating twenty thousand dollars from the budget code for city garage, gas, oil, lubricants, and appropriating four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents from the budget code for snow removal, salt, etc.
Move to adopt ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion by, um, Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt ordinance as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period five zero. Old business.
This has been a request from the law, for the law department for an update on the reverter matter involving one forty-nine slash one sixty-three Ingram Avenue. Rick, anything from the law department on that?
Yeah, so, you know, this property has quite a history, actually. Back in two thousand nine, in January of two thousand nine, the council approved the sale of this property, or substantially most of it, to an individual for fifteen hundred dollars plus survey costs and closing costs. The transfer then went through, was approved by the council on, on the twentieth of January, two thousand nine. On April first of two thousand nine, the deed was recorded and it contained a reverter clause that said that the property would automatically revert back to the city if the, if the home wasn't built on the property within eighteen months. In two thousand eleven, city attorney, Art Patrica, ordered a title search on the property and then wrote a letter to the owner advising the owner that the property reverted back to the city. And I believe the city then took possession of this property again. Uh, I'm not so sure the procedure was proper, but nonetheless, the city took over the property again and took it off the tax rolls. In August of two thousand twelve, there was an article in the Buffalo News regarding this piece of property because the- because the purchaser had been a former city councilman. Subsequent to that, the council then approved the sale to the same council member in June of 2016, not only for these parcels, but for an additional parcel, which basically runs from two side streets along Ingham Avenue. It's a nice parcel. As a matter of fact, you could probably build three houses on it. So the council approved that sale in June of 2016 for $1,500 with another reverter clause. In July of 15th, there was a receipt issued for the $1,500 payment for the property, and in August of 2016, the property was deeded to the individual, and it contained a similar reverter clause, basically stating that that individual had a year to build on the property or it would revert back to the city. That deed was then recorded, I believe, in September of 2016. In September of 2018, there was a letter from the first ward councilman, or former first ward councilman, I should say, requesting a two-year extension, saying he was going to build on the property. The council, on September 17th of 2018, approved an extension through the end of 2019. So they approved about a 15-month extension for him to build. The property still wasn't built, but I later found out, oh, subsequent to that, so that was in 2018. In May of 2019, the city attorney received a letter, or the council received a letter from former city attorney Art Patrica on behalf of the former councilman, saying that a Marcus Rivers was going to be buying the property and wanted to build on it and requested a two-year extension. I don't believe there was any action taken on that. But in any event, in December of 2019, just before the time would have expired for the owner to build on it, the owner deeded the property to a company called Hanna Home Solutions LLC for $3,000. I spoke to the individual who bought the property, a gentleman by the name of Izzy, I don't know if... I think he's on our planning board or something, but he's a friend of the former councilman. And I asked him what his intent was on this property. And he's now telling me that he wanted to put a parking lot on there. So I drove down and looked at the property, and I figured, well, you know what, if it was close to the mosque, it might fill a need, but it's probably, in my opinion, it's probably three blocks from the mosque, so you'd have no need for a parking lot down there. So that's where it sits. I also want to give you a report because I researched the law a little bit, and if you bear with me, I'll pull the statute out. There is a section, it's Section 612 of the Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law, which gives the city actually a 10-year statute of limitations to seek title back to the So we could do one of two things here. We can either give the individual a reasonable amount of time to purchase it to either build on it, or file an action to take the property back, or I could send a letter out to both individuals, the former owner as well as the purchaser, and advise them that the city will take legal action to take title back to this property as soon as the courts reopen, I should say, because right now, we can't do any nonessential filings. So basically, I guess whatever your council decides to do and/or the mayor decides to do with the council's blessing, but it's definitely a nice piece of property. I think it could be developed to put at least two houses on it, maybe three, I don't know. But there's no reason why somebody shouldn't be able to build a nice house on this.
Can I talk on... I had a discussion with one...
Yeah.
Councilman Ingram. Rick, in my interpretation of what you just said, there seem to be two glaring problems. The first being the transaction that occurred January of 2009 and the supposed action that the city took, taking the property back. I think you indicated that that may not have been a legitimate taking.
Okay, so I initially thought...
Having a court award a deed back to the city. And further complicated, isn't it an issue that if that was in 2009, and the city has a 10-year period within which to reclaim the property through appropriate proceedings, that time period may have been passed?
I don't think that's going to be an issue because I think the original owner already abandoned that claim by not objecting when Art Patrica wrote the letter in 2011, and when the city took it back then, and then put it back in our name and paid the taxes on it, especially in light of the fact that he was a councilman, and especially in light of the fact that he then repurchased it from the city in 2016, paid us $1,500 again, and we deeded it back to him. So...
Along with the other properties?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think we're okay on the deed. The statute seems to imply that the language that's contained in this deed is what they call a condition subsequent. In other words, we put a condition on the property subsequent to the transfer that gave him a reasonable amount of time to do something with it, and since he didn't do it, we now have cause to maintain an action under 612 of the Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law. I think we're okay under law. I think the question is, how do you want to proceed?
I don't think we should show our whole hand here. Maybe we should do this in an executive session or, you know, talk about it. We got time before the courts open. You know what I mean?
That may be a good suggestion, Councilman Serdy. Before we get to that, however, Councilman Ingram, you wanted to say something earlier.
Yeah, I want to say something about that piece of property, because I was there every time it was sold, every time it was given, and every time he got the extension. I was with the family that tried, were going to try to buy that property, but the put-houses on it. And I also understand some of the things he did as a councilman. I don't... My opinion on that, we should take the property back and make sure that people can bid on the property, to put our homes on it. We had a police officer that wanted to buy it, to put a home on there. We had other residents that wanted to buy it, to put a home on there. And the way that former councilman did what he did wasn't, I don't think was ethical. I don't think it was right. So I have some strong feelings about this. And I think, and I agree, maybe we need to go to executive session, but I have some very strong feeling about what he done.
Yeah, okay.
Well, let's put aside, I mean, if you put aside what was done, I think the goal of the council at the time of the transfer was to put this property back on the tax rolls and to have, hopefully, somebody build a residence on it, which would provide a residence in the city, but would also increase the tax revenues to the city of Lackawanna. And I think we have to pursue that one way or another, whether it's through the existing purchaser or through another party, that's, you know, that's an issue to be discussed and decided. But like I said, it's a nice piece of property, and there's no reason why it can't be developed in at least two residences and possibly three. So, or one, if that's, you know, if that's what you guys wish. But something should be done with this because, you know, and I've already indicated to the council and to the mayor that if there's any future transactions of this nature, they're going to be handled differently. We're not going to transfer the property until the building permit is taken out and until the party sets forth an initiative to go forward with the condition that we want them to do.
All right, Rick, thank you for your efforts on that and bringing us up to speed. Has the mayor indicated whether she wants to go forward with enforcing the reverter clause or not, or is that something she's still...
Not at this point. She hasn't indicated one way or the other.
Then why don't you check on the viability and the appropriateness of having this matter discussed in an executive session?
Okay.
And in the meantime, maybe we should table this to the next meeting to get further direction on it. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I could put it on the agenda for the next meeting as an action item, and we'll figure it out one way or the other.
Okay. As far as the council's concerned, anything, if you want any input on that issue?
I got one more question, you know. Rick, are you going to be in your office tomorrow, Friday?
Friday.
Friday?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have some questions. I need that. I need an answer.
On this?
On another... A part is of another matter.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'll be around. You know I'm around. Call me. Yeah.
Okay, unless there's anything further on any of these agenda items, I believe a motion to adjourn is in order.
Wait a minute. I'd like to say something.
Councilman Moretti?
As long as the public's watching, to let them know that this Saturday, there's a food drive at the Veterans Stadium between 10:00 and 12:00. We're looking for donations for needy families within Western Park or Erie County. So just to let the public know, come on down and help out.
And what would be the nature of the donations that you're looking for, Dean?
Non-perishable items. Could be, you know, toilet paper, paper towels, could be canned goods, things of that nature. As long as it's non-perishable.